The August 8th, 2024 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. A red light will come on when your time has expired. Also, out of respect for those speaking, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. And we have one request today, Mr. Chris Johnson?
I'll wait for the public hearing, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Yep, nobody else, so. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner still requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the planning zoning regular meeting held on Thursday, July 10th, 2024. Item B, consider approval of the Goodwin Estates final plat, which is approximately 2.25 acres located in the north right of way of South Friendswood Drive between Mansion Parkway and West Boulevard. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Commissioner Conrad?
I'll second.
Commissioner Rice? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Okay, next on the consent agenda are our action items. According to the Planning, Zoning Rules of Procedure, all actions of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such commission meetings. Item A, zoning ordinance amendment, replacement of the official zoning map. Item I, conduct a public hearing regarding the replacement of the official zoning map, Appendix C zoning, Section 3 provision for official zoning map of the Friendswood City Code reflecting zone changes and corrections since the last adopted map dated February 3rd, 2020. Aubrey, can you provide staff presentation?
Actually, Becky's gonna... Yes, sir, so the last time we updated our official zoning map was February 2020. Since then, we've kept a running total of all the zone changes that have been approved by ordinance. There's 29 on this spreadsheet that is teeny tiny on your screens up there. It is in the backup material if y'all got a chance to look at that. Out of the 29, one of them was a correction from a few years ago, but we had four churches, three schools, one was a city zone change, five residential and 15 commercial. So that's a good sign that we've got such a large amount going towards our commercial, which is part of our long-term plans. Other than that, the subcommittee took a look at it, I don't think anybody had any issues, this is just basically making a new, easy-to-reference PDF.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
I don't, I just don't understand it, and I, so the...
If you could introduce yourself.
Yeah, sorry, Chris Johnson, 36 Wilderness Trail, and so I look at these maps, and I'll tell you that I've looked at a ton of maps as we've gone on. I look at the future land use map and the thoroughfare plans and all of the things, and so whenever a new map comes up, I'm like, there's a new map, and I better show up and tell you I don't understand it. And so with regard to this map, there's like a little hash mark over the top of my property, which is 36 Wilderness Trail, which may relate to the special permit, special use permit, changes that are coming up at the next public hearing, or may relate to the change in the zoning map. I mean, my understanding generally is that what we're doing here is having a zoning map change to reflect the zoning approvals that are, have already happened, which I think is just a reflection of what's already occurred by ordinance, which is kind of like just meeting the ordinances where they are, which I think I get, but, and I'm gonna walk over to the map, and I apologize for leaving the microphone. But there is a, up where the... Up where we are in Wilderness Trail, there's hash marks over the top of my property that then run into Mr. Karam's property to the north, and I don't know what that means. So when I see red hashes, I just, I don't, I'm not aware that there's been a zoning change. That area right now is single-family residential, and then I think the future land use map has it as single-family residential estate. And so I'm just curious what that means. Thus endeth my sermon. Yeah, go ahead.
Your property is a single-family residential, the red outlines with the hash marks are specific use permits?
Right.
And that's an SUP from a long time ago for oil wells. So it, you're correct, so this is just the map showing all the existing zoning that's been assigned to property.
Okay, so there's gonna be another public hearing on the special use permit amendments, right, coming up after this?
Yes.
And so with regard to the, the single-family residential, I guess my question with regard to this zoning map, is that an accurate reflection of the current zoning that's there now, which this is all single-family residential? I don't think that there's, would be any permitted oil and gas activity at this juncture.
That SUP was approved a long, long time ago, I'd have to look, I don't know what date off the top of my head, but once those SUPs are approved, unless the owner applies to remove them, they've remained on the map up until this point.
I would have to come for a special use permit if I wanted to drill an oil well there in the front, right off of Wilderness Trail, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, but that's what that hash mark means over there.
Yes.
That was from 1985, by the way.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Item, item two, consider a recommendation of City Council regarding the replacement of the official zoning map, Appendix C zoning, Section 3 provision for official zoning map of the Friendswood City Code reflecting zone changes and corrections since the last adopted map dated February 3rd, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Commissioner Rice, Commissioner Bowes? Aubrey or Becky, any additional information?
No, sir, but like Mr. Johnson said, this is a reflection of anything that has been approved in the past. So everything that is already on the books, this is just a map of it.
Just making it current.
Yes, SUPs run with the land, they, they stay there unless somebody removes them. I think staff looked at it, the city attorney looked at it, and the subcommittee looked at it, and as far as we can tell, all of this looks accurate. And sidebar, if any of this, say by chance, was not correct, the ordinance is what rules, not the map. This is just a picture of the ordinances.
Mr. Johnson, I saw you speak.
No, 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 I appreciate it, you answered my question, everybody should be quiet until Becky's...
All right, we'll start discussion with Commissioner Rose?
Nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Bowes?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Sassen?
I'm good.
Commissioner Conrad?
I'm pleased with the map, you know, you can look at it at this size, and it looks really good, it's nice to have as a reference.
Commissioner Min?
I do know it takes a lot of work. I know it takes a lot of work to get this done, having it match so that we can take a look at it for future land use maps and other stuff, I really appreciate this, this is awesome, thank you.
And all I'll do is echo that, that it's nice just to have the updated to look at when we are discussing other items, so I appreciate the effort. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Item Z, or item B, zoning ordinance amendment, Section 3 and Section 9G 7. Conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning, Section 3 provision for official zoning map, and Section 9 administrative, administration and enforcement, billing permits and certificates of zoning compliance. Subsection G, specific use permits, paragraph 7, time limit of the Friendswood City Code to amend the process of maintaining the official zoning map and to amend the time limit criteria for specific use permits. Becky, can you provide staff presentation?
Yes, sir, this is another item that was part of our previous discussion about the map, the subcommittee took a look at this as well. So all of these marked out red sentences basically are either redundant or not necessary. If, let me go back to the map, so in the top left-hand corner of this map, there's a little block that says, basically, hang on, I can't read that far. This certifies the official map, and then the mayor signs it, and the city secretary signs it. That's not necessary because they've already approved and certified the ordinances, and this is just a picture of that. So when we were talking about redoing our map, our lovely city attorney said that we can clean this up. So we're now down to just, just two sentences that basically says regardless of what the map shows, the ordinances are the official documents. So, part two, so that's Section 3, that's just for the map. The other part of that was the specific use permit, so Section 9G. As of right now, we do have rules for, if you get an SUP, a specific use permit, and it, say it's approved, but then you never, you never build anything, then it will expire after two years. There are some provisions in there for phasing, things like that, but we don't have anything on the books that says if the use goes away, we don't have a way to take that off the map. So, for example, that senior facility that was at the corner of Heritage that flooded very badly during Harvey, that facility has since been demolished, the property has been rezoned, it has been replatted, and they've started building single-family homes. So there is no way they are ever gonna get that assisted living facility back there. So we're looking for a way to take that off the map. And that really is, that's really the only change, we kind of moved some things around. But if the subcommittee has anything to add...
Would that affect the oil wells that Mr. Johnson was talking about?
So the oil wells are a little bit different, most of those have easements with either oil or pipeline companies. If the well or the pipeline is still there and it has a possibility of it reactivating, that's not something that staff would actively get rid of.
Unless they plug and abandon all the oil wells and maybe we think about it, okay.
Right, and if we, Karen, you may correct me if I'm wrong, if we get rid of any of these, do we need to give notice to them that their SUPs no longer valid?
So, when we grant an SUP, we would give the notice it expires and let them know. It would just...
Okay, so any SUP?
We could reach out and give the notice as well and tell them.
What? Can I ask a question, or should I wait?
We'll get questions in the...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Would anybody from the public like to speak?
Yes, so for this one, I'm opposed...
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Chris Johnson, 36 Wilderness Trail, I'm opposed to the idea of amending Section 3, which says that there's only gonna be an official zoning map in Aubrey's office, okay? This is not how to engage with the public so that we understand what's happening, and this is, this is not good, okay? I'm telling you, I'm a lawyer, I'm sorry.
The map will still be on the website and available to the public.
Except that you've decided that it won't have to, that the ordinances will control over the picture, and I'm telling you, that's not how engagement with the public works. So I do this for a living, where I go and have to pull statutes. It has been a chore to try to understand this city's ordinances, hold the map, the future land use map, the city's ordinances. The idea that you're not going to have a, that you're gonna change your law to say that the map does not have to be an accurate depiction of the ordinances that the ordinances will control is not meeting the public where they are, guys, okay? The whole idea about government is that people are supposed to know very clearly what's happening in this city, and y'all make these decisions, and then you say, okay, we're gonna have the map reflect what's happening, but if we've screwed that up, we're not gonna be accountable for that. That's not okay, the idea that the zoning map is not going to be an accurate reflection by ordinance is a problem. I think you should vote no on this one. And I just have to tell you, because I've gone through this process of trying to understand the rules, trying to understand where these things come from, and the process in which this happens, and the idea that we're gonna make it easier for you to make a mistake and not have to be accountable for it is not good government. It's easier for you, I, I, I mean, and when I say easier for you, I don't mean you personally, of course, I mean the government in general. It makes it easier for the government, but that's not the business of government. The business of government is supposed to be hard, it's supposed to be difficult because you have to meet the public where they are. And in this stage of digital information, we are expecting, and I'll just tell you, most people expect that if I go and pull up a zoning map, that that is the map, that is, that is the law, because that's what's published. There's not, I mean, I know that the city ordinances are published, you have to go to the ordinances, then you have to go to the subfolders, then you have to go to the subsections, and you have to find the zoning ordinance, and then you have to find where the zoning map is held to find out that the zoning map doesn't actually have to match all our ordinances. So then you'd have to go through each individual ordinance where they've all decided which zoning goes where, which is the reason you do the map, right, because to do all that work takes hours and hours of time, because it took hundreds of hours of time for the government to come up with those ordinances and rules and put them in place, which is why you come to a map. So now you're eliminating all of the requirements that the map matches all the work to make it a discernible and understandable by the public, right? And I get it, like, this is the way that these things happen, which is why I come to all of these meetings now, because it seems like a very basic idea, like, we're just gonna clean this up and make it easier, but you're not. What you're doing is you're making it harder for the public to understand. And I gotta tell you, man, like, these things make me nervous, because it's, and it's the old slippery slope where these things don't come back. Once you make it easier for yourselves, you don't agree to make it harder for yourselves. So I think you should vote no on this one, I think that you should continue to require that the map be certified by the city secretary and all the folks who are involved in making sure that it is an accurate reflection of the hundreds of ordinances that have taken place over the years to get to this zoning plan, especially because then it's gonna influence the future land use map, which we're all relying on. All of these things, one of the things I've learned throughout this process and all the times that I've come here to see you is that all of these things are interconnected, nothing happens by itself. So the minute you decide that the map doesn't have to be, that the ordinances will control regardless of what this map says, you have decided that all that work that goes into creating this map cannot be relied on by the public, which by the way, the only thing that's gonna show up on the website is gonna be that map. Okay, so I encourage you to vote no on this one. Yes, it'll be more difficult, but it's gonna require someone to sit on top of it and make sure it's accurate.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, consider a recommendation of City Council regarding the proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning, Section 3 for provision for official zoning map, and Section 9 administration and enforcement, billing permits and certificates of zoning compliance. Subsection G, special use permits, paragraph 7, time limit, of Friendswood City Code to amend the process of maintaining the official zoning map and to amend the time limit criteria for specific use permits. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Rice, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Sassen? Okay, Becky, do you have any additional comments?
I do, I think that what's referred to is Section B says regardless of any existence of reported copies of the official zoning map, which may be made or published from time to time, the official map is gonna be in Aubrey's office. So she is the one that's responsible for it, it's not that you have to go back and look at every single ordinance. We do have an official zoning map, that official zoning map will be in her office. She's responsible to make sure it's up to date, she's got GIS to make sure that it's up to date, so it's the map that will be looked. So you're not gonna have to do all the cross-referencing. We will have on our official zoning map where you can find those ordinances, because we have that via GIS, so you can click on it, and you can go to the ordinance, so it's not, not time-consuming or harsh or anything like that. But it's the copy, you know, copies might be all around, I might have a copy in my office, but it might not be right, because I've just printed it on one day and it's out of date the next after council makes the decision. So the official zoning map is gonna be in the office of Aubrey, at the Community Development Office.
Okay. Aubrey, anything else?
The community development staff will be responsible for the maintenance of that map. We will continue to keep track of the zone changes in the spreadsheet form. It just, the spreadsheet won't be put on the face of the map and a new map adopted in the future if we adopt this process. But administratively, we will continue the same process to maintain the correct information on the map. We use the, we use those official zoning maps like religiously. I mean, we have, they're all organized in folders, and I mean, we reference them all the time, so.
Anything else, Becky?
No, I think Karen mentioned the online GIS. The official zoning map, because we only update it every like five years, if you were to go on our website and click on the static map, you're not gonna see everything that's happened the past five years. If you click on the interactive map, all of that is kept up to date, so you would see, you know, anything that was done with City Council last month or last week, that's gonna be online. So we're still gonna have a map, the public is still available, you know, the public can still look at the map, it's still gonna be an accurate map, it's just taking out some of the triple certifications and cleaning up the language saying if there's, you know, 15 copies floating around, the one, official one, is the one in CDD's office. So it shouldn't change day-to-day business.
Okay. We'll start discussion with Commissioner Rice?
I have two questions. So the first one, I'll just stay on topic with that. Would it be beneficial to add language stating that the official map is in, in community development and on GIS?
We can only have one official, so you have to pick one. So that's gonna be the one that's in the control of the director.
Thinking my way through that.
Yeah, no, because we started, we drafted a couple versions of this, we had a section about GIS.
Or how about some verbiage that gives a time limit to updating GIS with the official map? Like, that needs to be updated within a certain time period after something's changed.
I guess it kind of goes...
Which would essentially make that an official map.
Well, I think it kind of goes back to every time an ordinance is passed for a zone change, the zoning map is, it's a living document. So when we pass an ordinance, it in effect changes the official zoning map.
Once we get the executed ordinance, we send it to GIS and they update it on the interactive map, and update the map within the same week that the zoning, that the zone change is acted on by council.
I guess what I'm getting at, after hearing Mr. Johnson speak, is maybe, maybe we need somewhere where we can tell the public, yes, it's in your office, but it's also right there, and that GIS is the same map. Does that make sense? I mean...
I guess maybe I don't understand.
Well, say Mr. Johnson wants to find a parcel in the history of that parcel, or find out what the zoning is, but he looks on the map in the city, but that's not the official map online, so somehow he has to confirm that that's the official map. So... Or that's updated, per se, is that?
Well, it has a date on it, the maps have a date that says this is effective as of this date.
So GIS has that too, though?
GIS is a living document as well.
You know, when I'm doing stuff, that's where I look, is the GIS.
Right.
I don't understand this, but...
Did you have a...
Which, so, I mean, we still have to maintain like a large format PDF of the official zoning map for open records requests, because if we get, if we got an open records request for the official zoning map, we would basically, I mean, we'd have to provide a PDF because you can't provide the interactive map. So there will still be a paper map.
Official.
Yeah, for...
I mean, yeah, there's, there's always gonna be a lag between, City Council approves it at 7:00 PM on Monday, there's always gonna be a lag when that is online.
I'm just thinking more in terms of...
No, I'm with you, I'm trying to...
A layperson knowing where to look for the official map. Oh, you know, if it says it's official, so...
Yeah, well, it's on, the one that, the, the one that the ordinance is referencing, that it's in the CDD office, it's on the website as well, the static map is. So it's readily available.
Just making sure that's out there. And then my second question goes back to the, to item one. With the time limit expiring on this SUP, wouldn't that be similar to what we do now with, with the commercial site plan? Because at the end, we say you've got, how, 90 days, or, or, this expires in one year from today, I think is what it says.
Yes, which is language that's in there now.
So we don't send them a notice at, at the end of the year if they haven't done anything, right?
I do.
Oh, do you? Okay, I just think whatever we do with that probably ought to be the same.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do as a courtesy, we don't have to, you know, they were, when they got their approval, they were told this is good for a year, but...
I'm not, well, I'm not saying we need to officially have to do that, I'm just saying whatever our, our standard operating procedure is, it probably ought to match for both of those.
Yes, the current language for SUPs, we're not changing, the current language says if you don't start it, it expires. What we're adding is if you stop this use, then it will expire.
All right.
Yep.
That's all, as if that wasn't enough.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I just, I've heard it a couple of times, I wanna make sure it's crystal clear in my mind. There is a map that we keep and we update every five years, and that goes through the rigmarole of having the City Council and mayor sign off on it when it changes, like now. And then there is the map that we update regularly and keep in Aubrey's office. Is that a hard copy map or a PDF?
The interactive map is maintained in our office as well as the, in the past, once an official map is adopted, we track the changes for that map, that's...
So, so the map doesn't reflect on the colors, but on the addendums, it says, you gotta look through the, whatever, however many there have been in up to five years of changes, so... So the update is not changing the colors or the depiction of the map, it's looking at your spot and then going through the list of up to however many there were this time, 40 or so.
Well, so part of the, if you, like, so with this old process, so say if you came in and requested an official zoning map from 2020, you're gonna get that map that was adopted in 20, or updated in 2020.
Right.
But none of the zones, like, if you're submitting that request today, none of the changes between 2020 and now are gonna be on that official map.
Which makes it of dubious value.
Yeah.
Right, I agree, so the new rule is that, explain it to me.
So we'll maintain everything electronically, so on the interactive map.
Okay.
If someone submits an open records request, we will have to generate a PDF of that, of that map, yeah, snapshot of that map at that day.
And that doesn't include the colors changing necessarily, but it has the addendums of all the items. And so what you do is look and say, okay, mine is light green, that's SFR, and I'm good, but I need to make sure nothing happened to my spot. Okay. You look through the, the list of exceptions that have occurred in, since the map was officially updated and recolored.
Yeah, so my intention is to, like I said, administratively, we will continue the same process of tracking the changes on the map. It's just not gonna come back to City Council for the mayor to attest the map.
Yeah, I can see how that would be a...
If we wanted to maybe keep this similar process, but maybe bring the map back to the commission for blessing, could we do that?
Well, the, the actions already been taken by councils, so therefore we need to make sure that our official zoning map is what council did, so there's no need for you to double-check to make sure council did what they were supposed to do.
I'm with you on that. So, so right now, so going forward, if this is approved, we would have a map that has the last snapshot, up to five years old, plus a list of all the changes since then, but not reflected in the map itself, but as a description of this, this parcel is now changed to CSC from SFR or whatever. So you get a map that has it, but you gotta look through the 20 or 30 or 40 items.
Yeah, you'll have to go to the interactive map and click on the property, and, because our GIS is historical.
Yeah, the GIS is good.
If you click on the property, it shows you every ordinance that changed zoning on that property at all.
Right.
So...
And I kind of like Marcus's suggestion that maybe we should reflect that in the document here, to say if you really wanna see, you know, your document and not screw it up and not look at and say, hey, I looked through these items and I missed it. You know, I thought mine wasn't included, but it in fact is, and this is reflected, I missed it. You can go to the GIS and that should be foolproof. And putting in a reasonable time period for it to be updated, and I don't know if that's, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever, not, not something that doesn't burden staff, but also requires some kind of...
I think too, administratively, we could add a link to the, like, our planning and zoning page on the website for official, like, official zoning map. And we could have a better link, because to, to access the map now, you have to know to go open the maps on our website, you have to know how to turn on the layers and things like that, so we could make them, we have an active layer for more, like, just the zoning portion, and we could give some instructions and make that... and we could give some instructions and make that more accessible to the public on the, our planning and zoning website page.
I, I kind of like that, yeah. But I also kind of like in the ordinance itself saying, kind of what Marcus's point was, was, you know, you, 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 you have the zoning map with the addendum, go to Aubrey's office or go wherever. But also you can go to the GIS as an option. It doesn't, it's silent on that right now. And I think that's a very useful feature that you keep up and we should at least take credit for that and, and.
So the city of Georgetown had some wording for GIS related stuff in their ordinances. We kind of tossed that around, so.
Yeah, we discussed it and the reason we did not put that, we didn't put a timeframe and we didn't put the GIS reference in there is because if something happens and for whatever reason, we can't update that in that timeframe, we're sticking ourselves in a bad spot. So if Monday, city council approves a, a zone change ordinance and then say Wednesday or Thursday, I don't know, we get hit by a hurricane and our GIS department cannot meet the deadline that we put in our ordinance.
Yeah, I'm not saying make it tight. I'm saying, you know, make it to where it can be done. You know, I mean, make, make it, you know, a month, I don't know, but.
Thirty days.
Thirty days, yeah, whatever. But, but letting people know, this is really, you know, in addition to hauling your butt out and going over to see Aubrey's office and, and look at it, you can also do it online through the GIS system. And, and then people who are invalid or, or, you know, can get to it online, know this is another option, you know, because you're keeping up two sets of data anyway. You might as well take credit for it. You're keeping it up in two places, on the, on the map and on the GIS.
They, I mean, we can look at adding language. I think things like that, we normally do more on an operational level, not a codification of city law, basically.
Well, there's two parts to the request. One is to mention that the GIS is an option, which you're, it's silent on right now. And the other is the deadline. You seem to be really concerned about the deadline, no matter how much we put it out. At thirty days, I thought was enough, but, you know, whatever. But you can even use the word best efforts, you know, in there to say, we'll try it, but don't prosecute us if we don't make it in, you know, a week or three weeks or whatever.
Okay, well, do y'all?
Do you want to table this?
Do you want to take it back to the subcommittee?
Well, let's get the rest of the comments out then we can-
Okay.
I'm done.
Commissioner Man?
Yep. I agree. There's a ver, there's a portion of this that's version control. We want to make sure that we have that correctly. People can print off maps, people can download a map and then wait a year and then go, no, look at this map. So I don't mind the verbiage in here saying, the actual map is in this place, right? I don't mind that. But we bring up really good points because the burden should be on us, us being the government, to make it easy for someone to go, hey, I want to take a look at this. And if I go to your website, it's accurate and up to date within reason, right? I, I agree. Like hurricane or something happens, whatever, thirty days I think should be, is reasonable. So I, I do like the idea of us maybe massaging this a little bit more and maybe tabling it. But, but it's funny because the way I read it, I was great with it until we started really kind of peeling back and hearing it from a different perspective, because I hadn't, listening to you, I, it changed kind of the way I read this. When I first read it, I thought it was great, so. So that, that's my, that's my, those are my comments.
Commissioner Conrad?
I agree with that. I mean, that looked really good to me as well. But once you start discussing and talking about all the possibilities, I think we need to add something to it.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I think I've got the answer, but that was also concerning as I listened to the comments. It's the whether or not we were defaulting to saying that it's up to you, the public, to figure out what's going on. Because if, if the map is there, don't worry about everything that goes behind it. It's your responsibility. But I think that was addressed on that, at least the answers I've heard sound like. With the, with the other maps that you have online, is you can't dig into it and actually figure out what's going on. But I, as I listened to the comments, it seemed like initially it was, the map is there, but it's your responsibility to figure out if there's other stuff under it that's, that's not covered. But I think that's, that's better.
Maybe a point of clarification. So most of the, in, most of the time when we're dealing with an official zoning designation or in, like, is when we're dealing with particular property owner, like to develop their property. So when they come in to start having DRCs and all that, what's, you know, that's the first thing we go to is what is your property zoned? And so that's the purpose of the official zoning map as far as a day to day purpose, is to determine the official zoning of the property. Like I said, that is the history of all that, back to nineteen seventy was when we had our, our first official zoning map was adopted, is in GIS. The, you can, like I said, you can click on a property and, you know, if the zoning's changed five times, the five ordinances are linked in there. So that's the day to day purpose. I mean, an overall map of the zoning is great for, you know, some of our planning purposes. And we can generate those maps. But like I said, typical inquiries to the official zoning is usually on an individual basis, so.
Commissioner Bounce?
Karen, what's your opinion? Not to be a dead horse, but you, you said the information out there is dated, has a date on it. Well, if I'm, if I'm a public person coming in and I'm looking online and I see it's a month old, I'm going to do everything I can to get with Aubrey and Becky and whomever to find out if I have the, if, who has the most up to date information. And if you put that information that you said earlier, that you could put some steps and explanation, I think that would help overcome that issue, so.
Yeah, the interactive one is going to be the most accurate and current.
See, I think functionally, the interactive one, it, it functionally it works. But when we start putting it down on here and explaining it, it, we've got to be crystal clear exactly what that means. I think func, like it works now. The interactive one is awesome. But we've got to reflect that so that everybody understands that as well.
Karen, where you want to add anything?
So what I'm hearing is we want a thirty day mandatory update of the, of the map once it's changed by council. And they want the GIS to be the official zoning map. Is that right? Which is kept in Aubrey's office.
I don't know.
So she could designate that. I'm just trying to make sure that-
Best effort, thirty, thirty days, something.
I think, I think the, I think the consensus is more that to have a, a duration, not, not necessarily thirty days, just something there where there's an expect, expectation that it's going to happen within a certain timeframe.
You can even write in a reasonable amount of time and quote thirty days, meaning that seems like a reasonable amount of time, right?
And part, part of that could also be that, you know, we know the current, current administration that handles this, right? But in the future, there could be a, a different person handling that that maybe not quite as consistent and accurate, right? So how do we protect ourselves in the future? Do we want to change the motion or?
Do I need to change the motion?
We can just have a motion to postpone until next, next meeting or whenever we want to postpone it to, and that would take care of it.
You know, the, before we get to that point, the, the one thing that I'd like to add and maybe as a recommendation is that, and I know it's not necessarily our tool, but maybe just at the farmer's market or something, just starting to promote the different maps that we have, right, that people have a better understanding of what we, what we do currently have. So it just may be a suggestion for something we do in the future.
Education.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we-
Table?
Table this item.
Postpone is the official, yeah. Postpone and our next meeting would be-
I will rely on you guys to-
August twenty second.
Okay, we have a motion-
Second to motion.
Motion postpone, no second. Commissioner Rice and Bounce? Okay, on the motion to postpone, all in favor? Motion passes. Now do we have to close the original motion? No, okay. Okay, next on our agenda are communications. And we'll start with item A. The next planning and zoning commission regular meetings have been scheduled for Thursday, August twenty second, twenty twenty four, and Thursday, September twelfth, twenty twenty four. Uh, the twenty, July twenty twenty four DRC report is in the backup material. Aubrey, you have any comments on that? Anything?
Uh, no.
Uh, next, city council updates from our liaison council member. Council member Hanks.
Yes, good evening. We had a school, uh, school board, we had a city council meeting Monday night and approved the ordinances that you had sent us as a recommendation for the property on five eighteen, near the Friendswood Pearland border for the Belmont, from a community shopping center to change the zone from community shopping center to a PUD for mixed use development. So that was approved. Uh, we also approved the ordinance that, um, I think y'all had discussed it too, about the tree height, the canopy of trees. We approved that. We also approved, we set, we set a tax rate to publish, even though we haven't approved the budget yet, because that's part of the truth and taxation laws that the state now makes you do. So you have to publish an anticipated tax rate even before you pass a budget. And so it was two cents less than what we were initially being told, so that's good news. The staff's done a great job of trying to squeeze the budget a little bit more and, and still meet all the expectations of our city, cities, citizens. We also are going to have a, some city council members discuss with our staff members the great job that they did during the hurricane burl, the management of that. And, and so, you know, we can always go from good to great, right? So we're going to have a little discussion about things that went really well and things that might even go stellar, you know, next time. So if you have any ideas about that, you know, reach out to me. I'm happy to, to listen to you. Or if you have any other council members you want to talk to, that'd be great. And so that's pretty much it for, for PNC. Any questions, I think?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
I think it's awesome that you guys are doing a review, like a debrief of the, of that play out. That's awesome.
Commissioner Bounce?
Final thoughts, is that what we're asking for?
Was that? Our final comments?
Yes, no, thank you, thank you to the staff, because I know, like they said earlier, putting this together is, is a very extreme time. So thank you and thank you for your support during the meeting.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, just another thank, round of thanks. I really was educational to understand, to process better and also hear from, hear from the, those outside of the commission. It's just that sometimes you're not aware of all of the things that the citizens are really concerned about. It's really helpful to hear all the thoughts. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I echo that. Appreciate staff's willingness to address new ideas and not be defensive and, and open to, let's get it right. But I mostly want to thank our public, our one member of the public who came forward. And I think, I speak for everyone here that says you shifted the entire thought process on this particular item. It shows that the public who get informed and study something can make a difference, and I appreciate you making a difference.
Commissioner Man?
Of course, Commissioner Sassen always steals my thunder. But thank you so much. I do appreciate it. That's awesome. Uh, I wish more people would take a look at it and, and help, help out, because that's what makes us all better. So that's great. I know I talked about the debrief, which is great, and I appreciate y'all, and I'm happy to be here.
Commissioner Conrad?
Yeah, thank you for all the contributions, you know, coming in from the public and everything and everyone here. So thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Ditto to everything. And I often do hit the GIS map, just in my line of work, and have never really thought of it from your perspective. From your perspective, I think the same thing of the Muni code. I hate that thing. So, but anyway, I understand and thank you and staff, thank you guys for letting me air my, my thoughts on that.
I echo the same comments. And just somewhat stepping back for a second, but what are our next steps on that? Or is the subcommittee going to meet and discuss it or?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll have to squeeze in a subcommittee meeting in the next, probably week to be able to discuss with them and then get it drafted, get city attorney to look at it and get it on the next agenda. So I'll send something out Monday.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Um, and likewise, I appreciate all the effort you guys put into the, the map, so. But I do also feel that, you know, I think there's a lot of tools out there that we do have as a city that just, a lot of the residents may not even know they're there or how to use them, so that, that may be something we look towards in the future is just communication of those tools. Other than that, Aubrey, anything else?
Um, yeah, I was just going to clarify the tree ordinance that was approved by council did not come to y'all. Um, that was straight from Public Works, because it was not in the zoning or subdivision ordinance, so it was not required to come to you. But they did increase the minimum tree height, like over the curbs to fifteen feet. I think it was eleven or twelve feet, which was, um, like RVs and things like that are hitting the trees now. So that was updated. Um, there was also a requirement added to that section. It's chapter seventy of the Code of Ordinances, um, that no trees are allowed in the right of way or in public utility easements without city engineer's approval. So we kind of already enforce that on site plans. We don't let them put trees in utility easements. And then we have the separation in the zoning ordinance about overhead and underground utilities, but this kind of like belt straps and suspenders, um, so that's been added. Council also approved a resolution to support an application to the GLO for a resilient communities grant. I am working on that. I'm working with a consultant. Um, it's a three hundred thousand dollar no matching grant that they will provide to update our comprehensive plan. So we've been working on a, a layman's update for a couple of years, and I intend to finish that simple update. But the, if we get this grant, a consultant would come in and review our comprehensive plan, review the hazard mitigation plans that we are partnered with, with Galveston, Harris Counties, and give us a full comprehensive update to our comprehensive plan. So that is in the works. And then they also approved an ordinance to waive storm-related permit fees for barrel-related repairs. Um, so roof repairs and all that through the end of the year. Um, it's going to take time for people to get insurance claims and, you know, we want their contractors to get permits. Um, so we're waiving storm-related permit fees through December thirty first.
Okay.
Thank you, Aubrey. Did you just give my important?
Oh, you did, good.
Becky?
Uh, no, sir.
Karen? One other thing, just, just for everybody, what's it called, the Under the Oaks tonight? Yeah, just for anybody that might want to attend. But with that, thank you everyone for attending this evening, and the August eighth, twenty twenty four planning zoning regular meeting is now adjourned.